Uh, we'll start off our meetings as we always do with our national anthem.
True patriot love in all life and come man with glowing hearts we see. We rise the true north strong and bring and breathe from far and wide. Oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Seventy-nine percent of the positions in corporate services have the ability to work remotely. And twelve percent from protective and social services. So because of the workflow, uh, the, sorry, the workforce fluctuates over the seasons. Uh, on average, we can say that around twenty to twenty-five percent of the workforce has the ability to work remotely on quasi-permanent lists. This is a very interesting and powerful finding and a real test we were able to experience due to COVID- nineteen. At peak of COVID, uh, I would say between mid-April until end of May, thirty-five percent of staff were working remotely. Um, as you can see, except for some recreational services, the city, um, continued to operate normally in many functions and services. The majority of the twenty-plus key goals established by council and the senior management team for twenty-twenty, uh, continue to progress and will be in target zone at year-end. The procurement department continues to issue request proposals and requests for interest, obtaining quotes for projects and issuing an awarding tenders, um, using digital tools and innovative systems, operating in an efficient and uninterrupted way. The two thousand twenty capital projects are underway with minimum delays, uh, due mostly to supply chain, uh, outside of our control. Uh, that is another example that the city is maintaining all planned pre-COVID, uh, activities on the construction and maintenance side of our operations. The parks and transportation departments are also maintaining full summer operations as scheduled, uh, thanks to the redeployment of the workforce across the organization. Hot holes have been filled, roads have been resurfaced, and the parks and PULs have been maintained appropriately, following our established level of service and standards. All service areas have created many efficiencies and innovative solutions during this pandemic. Our corporate services team has maintained all our backbone systems operational, allowing for rapid implementation of various complex solutions to several residents based on technology. Taxation time was stressful for this area, responding to several changes to tax deadlines, recalculations of school requisition impacts, and even a tax rebate, while still managing the city's budget in a very responsible and prudent manner. As you well know, many unknowns lie ahead in terms of our financial position from now to year-end twenty-twenty, from potentially recovering the extra cost incurred to respond to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, taking care of our vulnerable population, assisting neighboring communities, and providing essential services for many residents. Last week, Dr. Albert de Villiers from Alberta Health Services presented an update on the current COVID situation in the region and a forecast for the fall and winter season. As I mentioned at the beginning of my update, uh, a result of the declining slope of the bell curve on infection cases, uh, GPREP lifted the state of local emergency, uh, last week and reduced the size of our emergency coordination center, refocusing resources to take care of our vulnerable population and other social services on the map. We will continue to monitor the coronavirus situation over time and will be ready to reinstate the state of local emergency if needed. Effective this weekend, the province of Alberta is now, is now encouraging everyone to get tested, even asymptomatic individuals on a regular basis. Appointments for testing can be booked, uh, online. In his presentation, uh, Dr. de Villiers from Alberta Health Services presented the three models that a, a potential second wave of coronavirus may follow, uh, in the fa, in the fall or winter month in our typical flu season. As my final comment, I would like to highlight that in all previous six significant pandemics in the planet in the last two-hundred-and-fifty years, there was always a second wave, followed by a, by a series of minor outbreaks or localized waves as the global immunity is developed or an effective vaccine is massively available. In the meantime, council and administration will diligently prepare for that scenario. So if it happens, the city will be in a prime position to respond and to keep the services and winter operations as planned to serve our residents with minimal destruction. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's my update.
Okay. Thanks, City Manager Galante. Uh, any questions for our city manager? Seeing, seeing none, then I'd look for a motion to receive that for information so we can move on through our agenda. Councilor Thieson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that, uh, council received the CAO report for information.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Thieson. Any discussion or debate? Seeing no one twitching, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Um, we'll move on to item seven point two. Can I get a motion to introduce this item? Councilor Minha? Council Minha should just have to get your microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I move the motion, uh, the council approved that, uh, before that, should we do this two-part or just one with the four hundred thousand dollar one?
Um, I think let's just do the, uh, the first part. Uh, you can make both, Councilor Minha. Uh, if anybody wanted to split the two apart, then we could do that.
Thank you. Move the council approve the designation of the land Plan Ten-Sixty-One A-E Block Thirty-Two, Lots Six, Seven, Eight, and Nine for the purpose of something proposal for the sporting, sportive lim, sporting housing project commerce con, construction in twenty-twenty-one in a partnership with the provincial government and that council allocate four hundred thousand dollars from the strategic plan, uh, strategic fund for the affordable housing as a municipal contribution towards the project.
Okay. Thanks, Councilor Minha. I know that we have, um, Director Manuel and, uh, Captain Schmidt, uh, on with us as well. Director Manuel, would you like to provide an introduction to this project?
Uh, certainly, I'd be pleased to. So the community supportive housing project in front of you is part of a proposal that the city has submitted to Alberta's seniors in housing, um, to allocate provincial funding, uh, as the primary source to, uh, get us, uh, some much-needed supportive housing in our community. And the intent is it's primarily targeted at individuals that have a history or at risk of, uh, great housing instability, that, uh, this is not transitional in that the homes are intended to be, uh, in an indefinite state if possible. So that, uh, um, additionally, these buildings would be built with accommodations that would include such things as, uh, community kitchen, programming space, and have onsite, uh, support staff, including medical intervention and social services, uh, where required. So what's in front of us right now is in order to advance the project forward, we have to identify, uh, a potential piece of land, which is what we've asked for here today. I, it, by no means, um, concludes the process. What the future test would entail would be, uh, us identifying the land here today, uh, including that within our application, as well as, uh, some potential municipal contribu, contribution financially. And, um, then we would be subject to a, a full sum community consultation and rezoning, um, exercise where, uh, each step would involve public hearings and engagement. Uh, if all went according to plan, uh, it's hopeful that we could have construction start, uh, late twenty-twenty-one.
Hey, thanks very much, Director Manuel. Um, any questions, comments, discussion, or debate? I don't see anybody raising their hand. Then if that's the case, I will call for the vote on Councilor Minha's motion. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Um, and that'll take us to item seven point three. This is our additional item. Uh, Council Resi, would you be, uh, up for making that motion?
Sure. So I would move that city council approves the land exchange agreement between the City of Grand Prairie and Canadian Mental Health Association for the exchange of city-owned Willow Place land, nine-seven-one-three One-Hundredth Avenue, for CMHA-owned land at one-zero-zero-one-three Ninety-seven Eighth Street and nine-seven-one-three Aberdeen Avenue. And just to speak briefly to this, this has been a, this has been in past council and committee meetings before. There's some land that CMHC is hoping to, hoping to secure for a new project, and it involves a land swap with the city for them to get their financing and do everything they need to do. Uh, the city land that we're contributing to them, if council approves this, is more expensive than the land that they'd be giving us. But kind of the deal is that we're, that is that if council approves this, we see their project as valuable and we're happy to donate that extra money as a gift and kind support, which would help them get this project done and also help that gift and kind would be re, would hopefully be recognized in some of their grant applications. So I'd encourage council to do what it takes to help them get this project going.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. Um, any discussion or debate or questions for administration? Again, seeing none, then I will call for the vote on Council Resi's motion. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Uh, I think that handled all of our items under reports and would take it into community business. Council Resi, I think you're, I think you're first up with infrastructure and economic development.
Great. Um, thank you. That's just on a different, different reports. Just give me a second. All right. So first of all, I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Infrastructure and Economic Development Committee meeting on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty-twenty, as presented.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Council Resi?
Great. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C thirteen-twenty-eight, being an amendment to the building bylaw.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. Uh, motion for first reading, so, uh, no discussion or debate on that. I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Council Resi?
Great. I would move the council give second reading to bylaw C thirteen-twenty-eight B. And just to speak to it, this is largely an administrative function, this, uh, bylaw, that some changes were needed just to update it, modernize it, make sure that it, that it flows, flows well. I don't think there's too much of significant substance that is being cha, being changed here. It's just making an existing bylaw work better.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. Any discussion or debate on, on second reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor of second reading? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And Council Resi?
Great. And I would move that council have third reading of bylaw C thirteen-twenty-eight B at this meeting.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. Any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading here, uh, this afternoon? And seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Motion does carry unanimously, so we can move on to third reading. Council Resi?
Great. And I would move the council give third reading to bylaw C thirteen-twenty-eight B, being an amendment to the building bylaw.
Okay. Thanks, Council Resi. One last opportunity. If there was something that, uh, slipped your mind and you really wanted to get it in, uh, third and final reading's the last opportunity. Okay, I don't, still don't see anything with anything to raise on the building bylaw. Then I will call for the vote on third and final reading. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously as well. Uh, Council Resi, go ahead.
Great. And then I would move that council endorse the Northwest Alberta Electric Vehicle Charging Network request from the town of Edson and provide up to one thousand dollars for the city to participate in this program. And just to speak to this, the town of Edson is trying to rally other municipalities in our corner of the province together to do so, to go after some federal grants that would allow some preliminary planning to be done about what, uh, more robust vehicle charging network might look like in our neck of the woods. And they're asking for our endorsement. Say yes, we'd be interested in participating in that. We see that as important. And also, between all of the municipalities that they've solicited, they're hoping to raise thirty thousand dollars to go towards planning. I think it's really important to emphasize to the community who might be watching and to council that this is a small monetary thing. It's only a thousand dollars we're throwing in now. And there's nothing about this that says that municipalities need to participate in future capital projects to get the electric charging network done. It's just saying, hey, let's do some of that early work so that other municipalities or nonprofits or private industry make it happen in the future. Let's do some preliminary work to help this be planned. And I encourage council to support this. I think it's important for our tourism sector especially.
Thanks, Council Resi. Any discussion or debate? Councilor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, yeah, just to the, to the note in regards to, um, the intent of this letter. I think that the initial conversation is great. Uh, the city, I, I really appreciate if council supports this, to get behind it. As Council Resi mentioned, there, uh, are huge opportunities in the tourism aspect in regards to what overnight charging may look like. Um, charging isn't a quick process. So to have people spend time in your community for charging their vehicles, uh, could be, uh, have, you know, substantial economic impact, uh, either through tourism and through retail, through hospitality. Um, but the other part of it that I just wanted to make note of, if, uh, there isn't enough support from the other municipalities, I hope our council will consider potentially an increased financial support. So through communication of administration or if they write, uh, directly back to Mayor Given, um, I, I'd like this topic to stay sort of fluid. And so I just, um, appreciate this step for now, but I look forward to further conversations on it. So thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Council Clayton. Um, any other discussion or debate? I don't see any, then, uh, Council Resi, anything you want to say to close? Well, okay. Thank you. Then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. And Council Resi, anything else you want to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yeah, first of all, a couple of things that I'll highlight from the director's service area update. Uh, one, he just, um, there was some talk about an economic development strategy that's being led by the town of Sexsmith, but involves the city and the other urban municipalities in our region. And it, it's great to let me know that us and the towns in our region are working together to figure out what can urban re, economic development look like in the coming years here. Uh, we had an update about a huge number of capital projects that the city's doing right now, and I'm sure the community's really going to appreciate some of the improvements that they're going to see in their built environments around them. And also an update on, uh, provincial capital project. And that is that the hospital is moving forward with its final ex, ex, um, inspections. But I believe it was last week that they were gonna, gonna be moving forward with their final ex, expansion, or sorry, inspections. And I think there's two things worth highlighting there. One is this is very good news for the community that that hospital is finally done and about to be handed over to Alberta House, Health, like you go about opening it. I also think it's worth highlighting that this hospital comes with a significant cost to the City of Grand Prairie to host. And what's great about us doing inspections is the province actually pays us a fair cost for that municipal service we're delivering. But going forward, now that it's inspected, it's still gonna consume municipal services such as police, fire, roads to it. And those services are gonna benefit many residents that don't live in the City of Grand Prairie. And now that it's inspected, it's kind of the last time that our residents get fair payment for the money that they sink into it. So it's great that it's gonna be open. It's not so great that now is when residents and other municipalities get to enjoy the fruits of our taxpayers' dollars. So I think that's worth highlighting. Uh, last thing that I will highlight here is there's a great conversation at committee around business licensing. And we got an update from administration about where our business licensing bylaws are. And it looks like we're gonna be having some great discussions about those in the fall. And I think it's a really great opportunity implementing licensing to get more information about what's going on in our economy and how we as a city can better support it and how we can help private industry out. So I'm excited for this process to move forward and it's great to have some great conversation about that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much, Council Resi. And I think that takes us to eight point two and, uh, Community Services. And Councilor Freezon?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So I would, uh, like to recommend that council adopt the minutes of the Community Services meeting held Tuesday, June ninth, twenty-twenty, as presented.
Thanks, Council Freezon. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Are there any, uh, errors or omissions that we want to correct? I don't see anybody with anything, then I will call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, Council Freez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Given. So there's a couple of motions arising out of the, uh, meeting. And the first one, um, we recommend that council approve the disposal of accessible transit unit number TD-P zero-three-seven by donation to Pards when the unit is removed from service for the city. So to speak to this, um, we had Jennifer Douglas from Pards, uh, come to committee and give us a little bit of background in what it, what it's been like to get the Pards', um, clientele out to the site over the last couple of years. Accessible Transit had been doing, uh, a, a great job, and when they kind of ran into a little bit of operational difficulties, um, another community member, um, a, a business was able to sell a unit to Pards so that Pards could do their own, um, their own, uh, transportation for their, for their folks. So that unit worked for some time, um, but now it's becoming cost prohibitive to keep running it. It's not worth, uh, continuing to fix. So Pards has asked us if we've got something or if we could help out with, uh, with a unit. And it's, uh, great timing because we have this unit that is an accessible transit unit that is nearing the end of its usable life for the city, but certainly could be passed on to an organization like Pards. And, um, the value to us is not great. We, usually, um, we sell our, uh, uh, things that we take out of commission, we sell on, uh, gov deals and, and we would get, um, maybe a few thousands for this particular unit. But the value to Pards would likely be well beyond that. So the committee, um, uh, moved that the transfer be done, um, at no cost to Pards when the vehicle is out of service.
Thanks very much, Council Freezon. Um, any questions or discussion, uh, debate on the recommendation? Council Thieson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, just a question for administration in regards to the transit unit. Uh, my interpretation at the committee meeting was that it was already removed from service. And, uh, uh, or, so I guess my question is, uh, in regards to the recommendation, when the unit is removed from service. Is it still in service right now or, um, or is it officially out of service and ready for donation?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, at this time, it's still in service. We did, uh, order some replacement buses a few months ago, and they should be here by the end of August. So it, it'll be in service till near the end of August.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Council Thieson. Thanks, Director Miller. Any other discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote on Councilor Freezon's motion, uh, to approve the disposal of that unit. All in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Uh, Council Freez?
Thank you. So another motion arose, and, um, I would like to make that now, that council approve five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand in capital funding to revitalize Revolution Place lobby spaces, upgrade the speed of service within the lobby and the center gate concessions, and address the accessibility issues at box office and reception desk. So to speak to this, Ms. Ridgeway from Revolution Place, um, came to us and there, there's, uh, a number of benefits that this five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand dollars would have for Revolution Place. And it, uh, includes painting the lobby and, and concourse, so sort of a general facelift and upgrade. It's been a few years since that was done. There is concession upgrades as well as accessibility at the box office. So currently, there's, there's no, um, uh, there's no lower countertop or that sort of thing at the box office. So the, the changes, uh, discussed would increase efficiency, speed of service, as well as, uh, there may be greater revenue potential, um, from some of the changes. And it enhances the customer, uh, customer health and safety in the facility as well.
Okay. Thanks, Council Freezon. Any discussion or debate on this motion? I don't see anybody. It doesn't appear that we have any. So, uh, if there's not, then I'll call for the vote on Council Freezon's motion. All in favor? Thank you. And opposed? I see one opposed. Thank you. Um, and Council Freez, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
I would like to. So, um, having just spoken about Revolution Place, um, I'd like to mention that, uh, the, the committee also asks that additional information on further renovations be brought forward. And, um, this is because it really is, sort of, the building is approaching its twenty-five-year, uh, mark. And, um, it's, it's been a great service to Grand Prairie, but it, we need to now really start looking at how we're gonna get it over the, you know, the next, um, however long it is that we're going to make use of that building. So is it gonna be a, you know, a ten-year lifespan or another twenty-five years or that sort of thing? And, um, in order to have it ready to, you know, for that next number of years, we really want to make sure that we're doing what is best for the facility in terms of, um, some additional seating, perhaps changing the look of the, or the, the box office a little bit because of changes in how people are doing ticketing. Um, there's a loading dock and a few different things like that that would really carry it well into the future. So we are looking for more information on that. Um, it is important to note that of the, the, uh, the motion that was just approved, there's very little of that that is really a, um, a throwaway cost. So the, the renovations or the upgrades that we've just approved, um, it's not a waste of money if we go forward with more improvements, uh, in the next year or so. Um, so I think our taxpayers need to know that, that we were careful about that. And from the director's service, uh, area update, just a couple of things. Um, congratulations to all of the grads. I know that the community knowledge campus was working, uh, with the Saint Joe's graduation committing to host the drive-through style graduation. And, um, uh, so I want to certainly congratulate the Saint Joe's grads as well as others in our community from the other high schools. Uh, the, um, reopening of city facilities is ongoing. And I know that, uh, direct, um, uh, CAO Galante spoke a lot about those, so I won't say much. But I walk past the outdoor pool, um, a few times a week and see stuff going on there. So as I was looking at what the temperature was doing this week, I know, um, come July, kids are gonna be buried and families are really gonna appreciate that, that at, at least we're gonna get that, um, fantastic new facility open this year. So that's exciting. Um, that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Council Freezon. Um, we'll move on then to Council Minha's and the Corporate Services Committee meeting. Council Minha?
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. I move the council adopt the minutes of the Cooperative Service Committee meeting held on Tuesday, June ninth, twenty-twenty, as presented.
Okay. Thanks, Council Minha. Any discussion or debate on those, that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All in favor? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Council Minha?
So I'll move that, uh, uh, item number eight-three-point-one, twenty-twenty tax rate target, council set up the tax rate twenty-twenty-one budget target of two per, two percent property tax increase.
Hey, thanks, Council Minha. Uh, open for discussion debate again, uh, as a reminder, you know, to, to council and to the public. Council's obviously well aware, but for the public. Uh, this is giving administration a target, and it is a part of the overall budgeting process. Uh, council ultimately doesn't set the, uh, tax rate increase or budget until we review that final product in the fall. Uh, but this is an opportunity for administration to understand, uh, sort of the, the general direction and intent of council. Councilor Blackburn, I think I saw your hand.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, when the presentation was made by administration to committee, um, they asked us to help them by setting, um, a target that they would work on their budget from in the range from one and a half to two and a half percent. And, um, I know that we're going to have to go through quite a bit in order to, uh, come up with our budget this fall because we'll, we will be dealing with a lot of challenges. I would like to move an- I would like to move an amendment to make the target two and a half percent so that we get the, the full view of what administration sees possible. And speaking to that, I know that, I know that we're trying to keep our tax increases as low as possible. And I'm sure that there will be quite a bit of change as we go through the, the budget process. But I would like to start with seeing a full range of what it is administration has in mind.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Blackburn. So that motion is specific and amends one portion of it of the, of the original motion. So obviously that's in order. I can perceive that we may end up having, you know, a bunch of different motions depending on how this one goes. I would like to remind all council members that again, this is a target. Ultimately, council has the final decision-making authority in November when we review the budget and have a choice about how much we choose to support from administration's recommendations or not support from administration's recommendations. So I, my hope is that we will get into, you know, dealing with point one percent, you know, that we start to get down to doing motions. But the motion is of course in order. And discussion debate here, I think I saw Counselor Plot.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I really appreciate the intent that Counselor Blackburn's motion that we need to be looking at things differently. And I actually think, I would support this if it had a down, a bottom side to it. And for me, I think when you're doing budgeting, with what's going on right now, we need to be looking at a minus, a zero. And if we're saying two and a half on the top end, I'm fine with that. But I couldn't support this motion just because it doesn't have a bottom end. We're, we're just assuming that we're okay up to two and a half. I loved how budget was done last year where the, for administration, there's a lot of work creating options for council to discuss and deliberate on whether we should strip things in or out. But at least I think that the community sees that we had a talk about whether we did stuff or not. Doesn't mean we're going to go down and we may end up going higher than, than some of us may want. But I think to just say up to a two and a half percent target for me, I can't support because I'd like to see a minus two and a half, then a zero and a two and a half plus just to see what the implications of that would look like. So unfortunately, I can't support your motion, Counselor Blackburn, but I'm fine with your two and a half number on the top end. If we could also discuss a range of, okay, have options, not just two and a half percent.
Thanks, Counselor Plot. Counselor Clayton, nice to you there. I just wondered though, Director Bork or City Manager Gualde, either or. Last year, administration presented council with alternatives and options at budget time. What's administration's intention for this budget process? And sort of how, how fixed will the, any target number that we might set here today? How fixed will that leave the budget? Maybe I'll go to the city manager first.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Given. Yeah, the intent for the senior management team is, is to mimic the process put in place last year when you had a range of, of tax targets between, last year was selected base, as the baseline was inflation that we, we assume about two percent, as you may recall. And then we went up and down one percent. So the, the design, the budget was done considering a plus one to plus three percent. And you have a variety of options with different levels of impact. Green package, yellow and red with, you know, lower impact, mid impact and higher impact in the organization. And council can discuss and select different options and finally select the, the target, the, the final rate. So this year, we want to repeat the same system. The, the original recommendation considering the COVID situation and the level of uncertainty was about between one point five to two point five percent. But we can work with any range that council desires. So as long as we establish the bottom and the ceiling on, on the range, we can come up with different options. Again, mimicking the three packages, the green, yellow and red. So we're looking mostly for direction on those, on the range.
And Director Bork, anything from a finance perspective in terms of process that your team has laid out?
The only thing I would add, just I would echo that yes, it is to mimic last year's process. The larger the range, the, the more significant the amount of work that would be required by, by finance. So that was why our recommendation was, was fairly narrow, but we can accommodate any range.
Okay, thanks, Director Bork. So we do have Counselor Blackburn's motion of a two percent target, sorry, two point five percent target. I will ask that we not make any amendments to an amendment. If we wanted to add something else additionally to sort of provide a range, then I'd ask that we do that after following this motion. So is there any other discussion debate on Counselor Blackburn's amendment? Counselor Clayton was next in the queue and then Counselor Bressi.
Yes, Mayor Given. Yeah, I can support this amendment. I, I echo some of Counselor Plot's comments in regards to the range. However, if this number was lower, even a, if, if council were to support a zero percent increase, even a plus one, then I would know with the, you know, red, yellow, green type system, what one percent looked like. But I'm very comfortable debating specific items at budget time. But to start at a point two, in my opinion, is simply too high. And a two point five even more so too high. There's huge economic impacts happening across the world. We don't know what our region, our municipality, our ratepayers' financial situations are going to be within the next year. And to sort of set them up at a rate with administration bringing back work that sets them up at a plus two or two point five, I think is, is unfortunate. I think that if we were, I'd be much more comfortable at a lower rate, you know. And then in November, we debate specific items. We'll have a little bit more of a glimpse of what's happening. However, a two point, a plus two point five is simply just too, too high for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. And Counselor Bressi.
Great, thanks, Mayor Given. I just, I just point out that if I'm doing my math right, asking for an increase of about two point five is an increase of about, getting pretty close to three million more dollars that we're bringing in. And I think that we're in a time where there, we're in a time where there are some great social needs right now. And there might actually be some justification to raise more money. But there's also times where oil prices are low and we've been hit by COVID. COVID nineteen has hurt a lot of families and businesses. And we need to be incredibly careful and incredibly thoughtful about the money we are spending in. I think for me, what I'd like to see is, I don't think we need to pick a range because I think the process where we start with one target and work from there worked well last year. But for me, I think that we should be setting a target that's at the lower end of what council's comfortable for. And then I have a hunch that as we, if we do set an aggressive target, as administration brings their recommendations of how to get to that target, there will probably be things in there that council says, no, we're not comfortable with that. So we're going to go a little bit higher with our target. I'm very open to that conversation. But I think for us, it's very incumbent on us to at least consider what a very aggressive budget would look like. And it's fair enough if we get to November and say, whoa, that's too aggressive. That's too many community impacts. We're not comfortable with that. I honestly have no idea if I'd be comfortable with what it would take to do a zero percent or a one percent. But I at least think it's incumbent on us to see what that would look like from administrator, administration's perspective. So I encourage council to defeat this motion and accept an amendment for something even lower than two percent, just for consideration at least in November.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Any other discussion or debate on the point? Counselor Thieson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I think I'm going to echo Counselor Blackburn on, on this side of it. Not because I'm a big aggressive tax raiser by any means. But I think Counselor Bressi made some great points about a bit of uncertainty, some instability in our economy, both nationally, globally and locally. So I think I'm going to support this motion largely because I'm not opposed to a point, to, or to a two point five percent tax increase. We may find that we need those funds after we get through budget and we start looking at things. But I would also support a range of options as well. So at this one here on the, on the bottom end, if somebody wants to make a subsequent motion to add, give us a range of zero, lower by one percent, and let's see where we go. I think I can get behind that too. But come budget time, I'd really have to take a good hard look as to what's being proposed. And I don't, I don't feel comfortable perpetually lowering taxes below the rate of inflation. Gets more costly and, and harder to catch up later on. So I, I look forward to a range of options and I think two point five percent isn't too much of a stretch. In fact, I might have even supported three. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Blackburn, I'll come to you to close on the amendment if, if that's okay. Any other discussion or debate? Yeah, Counselor Toole.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor Given. When we had our meeting the other day, the CLT was pretty specific that this was some, some barrier, not barriers, but some lines in the sand where they would like to get the concept from council where we want to be. And I think in general, I'm pretty happy with the two percent where we're at. And I won't be supporting this motion. I think we're going to have our hands full at, at budget. I can pretty much guarantee that there's going to be a little bit more stress than normal. And usually at budget, there's a lot of stress. And I'm willing to hold off at, at two percent. If it comes back that we need to expand it at that time, then we have that option. But this is just for information for CLT, our corporate leadership team, to make some plans and make that list, which is the, the one that's going to cause the most effect on the council and the, the operation of the city to the least effect. And if we do the same as we did last year, I think it was streamlined unbelievably, not necessarily easy, but it was easier to understand and we did get some feedback. We did make changes when CLT performed, presented to us. And so this is just a number and I think two percent is the high number that I'd like to stay to. But I'm going to say no to this vote and, and thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Counselor Toole. I'll just, I'll enter to say that I, you know, I, I would caution council about the, the targets and setting too low a target for this reason. At this stage in the process, I believe that it eliminates things that, that council may see in the fall. You know, if we, if we express a desire for too low a number, it may prevent things that we might wish to support from ever arriving at the council table for discussion in the fall. If there is a new initiative that council might otherwise, you know, Counselor Bressi had mentioned that there may be some things that we're willing to, and you didn't say this, Counselor Bressi. But you know, the intent was, I think, to say there may be some things that we'd be willing to spend money on. If we have too low a target or too low a range, administration may well say, well, no, that doesn't make the cut and it won't get in, in, even to the draft budget. That would be my concern. My level of comfort would be in setting maximum top end, which is what I think Counselor Blackburn is intending to do here. And then at budget time, rejecting things that we don't wish to fund. And saying, no, that actually isn't a priority at this time for these reasons. And these are things that we cannot afford to do right now. My concern about setting a, a overly low target and, and range I could be convinced on. But an overly low target would mean that there would be stuff that council, all of us or a majority of us might support that we may never get a chance to judge and see in November because administration would have to be planning to try to hit that lower target. So I will support Counselor Blackburn's motion. And I will look closely at all the items that come forward in November and actually in the other sort of reviews that we get leading into November to decide whether or not there are things that I think our community can afford at this time or in twenty twenty-one or whether they provide value to the community. I would like to have that range of decision-making rather than prejudging it and setting the stage for administration to potentially not bring things forward that, that we might be willing to support for those reasons. Yeah, I see Counselor Thieson and then Counselor Bressi.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will support this amendment that Counselor Blackburn has proposed. And I, I see it as the, the top end of what we may do next year. And I agree with, with Counselor Blackburn and Mayor Given that if we don't see what that potential vision is, then we'll never see it. And what's the harm in looking at it? I don't think that I would support that tax increase. I'm comfortable a little lower, maybe not to a zero, but, but I will support looking at this as a top end for sure. And I would like to, I'm, I'm hopeful that and, and I was certainly prepared to follow up with a motion that scenarios come forward as they did last year and give numbers on the scenarios at perhaps a zero percent and a, and a one point five. With the two point five being that, that top end, you know, blue sky vision of what we could do with that increase. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Counselor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I just, something I just pointed out in terms of process is if there's something that you would like to see get added in the process, in the budgets or council at least consider adding and you're nervous that too aggressive of a target might not allow for that to be presented to us, then make a motion at council or at a committee to get that presented to us. So for example, I know for me, I'd like us to spend more money on overseeing our photo radar program. And so I made a motion, which you guys supported, to have options presented in November for increase in the staff resource. Teaser, you might be seeing a notice of motion coming from me next city council meeting or at one, or you might see me adding an agenda to something I'm working on at one of the standing committee meetings because there's something else that I think I might like to see, see us spend some more money on and I want to make sure it's getting presented at council. So there's a way, there's a way to make sure that, that additions get added to our discussions in November. I think for me, what it's about is as I see big needs in our community, I really think that we need to be doing a good job of taking a second look at the things we're already doing in an organization. And I really worry that, I know that I can get, that I can do my best to get you guys support getting things added into the budget for consideration. But I don't think there's a great process for me to see administrations' recommendations or start the conversation about what are the things that we're already doing that we don't need to do to the same degree, degree right now. And I think the best way to have that conversation so that we can prune things to create room for things that are more a priority in the community is to set an aggressive target now, get more of those yellow, green and red buckets out of administration and ask them to do that, do that work of if we're going to reduce to a lower percentage, what would you guys suggest, suggest that look like? So please, if you're worried about something getting cut, make a motion to committee or make a motion to council before we get to budget negotiations. Don't let that tamper us from seeing the things that we might be able to prune to make room for other high priority programs in the community.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Did I see somebody else or if? Not sure if I had anybody else following Counselor Bressi? Not, then I will go to Counselor Blackburn to close.
Thank you, Mayor Given. And thank you for your comments. You were much more eloquent than I in talking about the concept of range. Let me be clear that I was making the basic assumption that as was promised by administration, we will see three scenarios presented to us. I, I don't know what those ranges might be and perhaps we want to make some recommendations to them about that. But I was presuming that we would see a range. I was also presuming that, that as we did last year, we will look at the impacts of the, the more aggressive cuts that might be necessary in order to achieve a lower number. But in the meantime, as, as Mayor Given pointed out, there's a possibility that there are going to be items that we feel that we must do or could do to our benefit if those are being presented in the budget. So really what we're talking about here is simply a target for starting. And, and I would really hope that we would, that, that we would allow administration to provide us with the, the, the range of possibilities at the top end as well as what the impacts would be if we started to head towards the lower end. Last year's process, I think, was very good, difficult, but very good. And I'm presuming that we will have the same thing to go by again this year. And so I'll reiterate that council, or sorry, that CLT. And so I'll reiterate that, uh, council, or sorry, that CLT had asked us, um, to provide them with a target at the upper end, between one and a half and two and a half percent. And I, I would really like to see what they have to offer at two and a half. So I would, uh, encourage you to vote in favor of this, uh, without fear that we're going to overtax our people. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Council Blackburn. Uh, for that close, so a call for the vote on Council Blackburn's amendment, which was to change the budget target from two percent to two point five percent. Uh, I'll call for the vote on that amendment. All those in favor? Okay, I see one, two, three, four, okay, and opposed. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, thank you. That motion does not carry, so we're back to the main motion as originally proposed by Council Minhaas. Council Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'm just, uh, question for administration, I guess, probably supposed to mark the direction more, just, you know, he, I, I believe he alluded to he'd like this fair range, so I'd like to make a motion, if there's a few of us who want to make a motion. I'm just curious what range they think is a fair range or an acceptable range for us to be able to look at?
Director Bork?
Um, the, the range we had provided, uh, at committee, the committee level was, uh, one point five to two point five. That's where we felt that we could bring some options forward. Um, like has been alluded to, we will be following the same processes last year with the red, yellow, and green packages. Really today is to set that, uh, that base for us to, to start working towards. Um, I will indicate that, though, um, a little bit different from last year is that, uh, I believe that there'll be a lot more red packages this year, which will be identifying a more significant impact to the organization, that the, uh, the yellow and green were some of the more eas, the easier things for us to do, and that this year will be a lot more, uh, red packages coming forward.
Okay, so, so can I understand this correctly, if the motion, if we didn't make any further motions with, with Council Blackburn, or the two percent is there if that was the motion passed? You guys would come with a range of, of one percent of options, and then the rest would be red if you wanted to try to achieve an all rate?
Director Bork?
Um-
Plus one and two, or?
Yeah, that would, that was similar to what we, uh, we did last year. And so, yes, that's what, uh, we'd be bringing forward. Um, I'm just trying to, just think of the math here in my head. We've done it, thought of it a little bit differently. Um... Yeah, that would be about what we would, we would do. We would make sure that there were sufficient enough options for there to be some decisions for, for council.
And so, sorry, Mayor Given, just one more question for Director Bork. So if we were to make a motion that was minus two and a half, zero, plus two and a half, for something about scenario, um, we could achieve it if just a lot of those would be red bucket items? Is, is, if I'm understanding that properly?
Uh, they would all be red bucket options.
Okay.
Let, team, uh, city manager as well? Sorry, Council Palat, I just, see the city manager here, I think, wanted to get in response to your, your question.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, so just, just to be clear, the, um, what, what we're trying to do is to, is to contain the, the range, so you will have comprehensive information to decide. So whatever is the range, we will, will work, and, and, and you will see those options. If, if there is a, um, a motion during council deliberations outside the range, let's suppose that the range, uh, agreed today, I'm just making up a number, is zero, two, plus three, just to put an example. And during November, during the budget deliberation, somebody makes motions to do a minus two, then we won't have the work done. Okay, so we'll have to go back to the night and, and do something like on the fly, so next morning we can present a minus two percent option. So that's, that's the situation we're trying to avoid now. If, you can give us the range you want. If it's minus five to plus five, it's good. If the, the wider the range, more work is, of course, for administration to come out with the packages, and as Director Bork said, um, you will see more red because of, you know, minus five impact will be significant red on the package. But you will have a well-thought, uh, menu of options in front of you, uh, for whatever the range is today. That's intent of now, in, in, in June, determine that range. So we're not, y, y, you know, trying to figure out things there a little bit, uh, um, without proper, you know, proper thought, uh, in, in the middle of budget deliberations. So, the recommendation from us was one point five to two point five. That's what we believe is prudent. We're worried about inflation. A lot of money's being printed right now, and that's gonna trigger inflation in the future. So, for now, it's about two percent, as it was last year, but we're, we're concerned about what we may see in inflation for, for years to come in the future. So keeping, um, more years of, um, taxes below that level, just, just a word of, of, you know, caution about, about that. Um, because, you know, every time we, we buy a tire, a new tire for a, a backhoe, for a grader, inflation is built into that product. Uh, contractual obligations, as you know, we have two unions. Uh, normally, the contractual obligations, you know, hover around inflation a little bit less over the last few years, but between one to one and a half percent. Uh, those are collective agreements, are negotiated, that we'll continue with that to have fifty-five percent if our workforce, uh, unionize. Um, so keep, keep in mind that. So, uh, hovering around inflation a little bit less, um, that is, that is our recommendation. And one, one and a half to two point five, that is the range that we initially recommend. Thank you.
Thanks, uh, Mr. City Manager. Um, I think I saw Counselor Clayton in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, a question for, um, other Director Bork or CEO, um, Galante. Um, if the motion of plus two, uh, is supported, is that the maximum the increases we'll see? That'll be the green column, and that would be the maximum amount suggested by administration?
Uh, yeah, I would take that. Yeah, we'll, we will design the, the packages to, to contain the options in those, in those, um, um, ranges. Um, remember last year, we, we, we recommended under the green package. So if you pass the green package, then you hit a, a specific percentage. Um, and this is the level of impact. Um, if, if the range is higher, you can do more things. And we want to know now, ideally now during the, the next few months, if you want to build something new, if you want to do something different, so we can incorporate those, those options, uh, as part of that. Uh, again, the more, the wider the range, more flexibility you will have in November, but it's more work as well for administration. So we need, uh, the heads up now, so we have proper time to, to work on those options. Uh, and the recommendation is to keep, you know, a, a, maybe a couple of percentage points, I would recommend more than that, uh, that would be, that would be, uh, ideal.
Sorry, what, sorry, uh, can you clarify what you mean by your last comment there? A couple of percentage points. You want to see a range recommended by council? Or you want to see the maximum increase?
No, a range. A range within a couple of percentage points.
And, and the, well, so, back to Director, um, Bork's comment. If we give a range that's too big, it's a lot of extra work for administration. So how big would you like to see this range?
So I think that's what I just heard City Manager say, is a range of a couple of points. So within two points, being a couple. So, in this case, that would be two to zero.
Okay.
That, that, am I understanding that correctly, Mr. Galante? Yeah? Okay?
Thank you.
Um, any, yep, thanks, Council Clayton. Any other discussion or debate on Council Minhaas's motion? Yeah, Council Palat?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. I'd like to make an amendment then, uh, and end this conversation, I think, so we can hopefully see, uh, a little bit of a range that, uh, administration sets a budget for zero to two percent. Or, sorry, I'm gonna go zero to two and a half percent. I appreciate it's a little bit over the box, but I would like to respect Council Blackburn's thought, what if we went a little higher, because I do think that's a good conversation to have as well. But I do think we need to look at the lower end of this as well. Um, it really worries me where, where we could be going with the city for lots of things. And to be able to ask in the, I want to remind us, we could have achieved a zero this year, so we're asking for three million dollars extra next year, and it hasn't happened yet. And most cases, I'm not trying to interrupt that directly, Galante, but I'm shortly not hearing the word inflation in this community right now. I'm certainly hearing a lot of deflationary numbers, the biggest one being labor costs. And I think seventy percent of our city's overall budget is labor. So when industry's saying labor is gonna go down, I'm a little concerned to hear that, you know, one of our largest lineaments, uh, we have the opportunity to go down too. But, you know, the unions and everything else, it revolves. But I think those are the kind of conversations, if we just start, again, assuming that we need a higher number, our community needs to know we're gonna be diligent on setting a lower number as well. So I hope that we can have a range of zero to two. Like it was mentioned earlier, budget's always a fun time of year, we'll have lots of conversations then. But I think it's important to have a zero to, two and a half, sorry, zero to two and a half percent target, uh, for us to deliberate on when it comes to budget. And to give administration a time to look at that and go with that as their range, so that we're not at budget time trying to pick away at finding other things they've actually said to us, it's red, but it's achievable, but it's red. I'd rather have that than us on the fly trying to amend things.
I have a point of clarification on the motion.
Sure, Council Clayton.
Um, zero to plus two point five?
Yes, correct.
Thanks.
Okay, okay, thanks, and thanks for that clarification. Um, any discussion or debate on Council Palat's amending motion, which would be to amend that single specific target number to a range, uh, from zero percent to two point five percent? Um, Council Blackburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I will speak in, or I, I will vote in, in support of the motion. Thank you, uh, Council Palat, for considering, uh, my thoughts on this one as well. Um, I'd just like to, I'd just like to remind council that the way things are going with inflation, with the loss of revenues that we've had and so on, it's very unlikely that we're going to be able to achieve a zero. And as much as we may want to, for the benefit of our taxpayers, I think it would be, it would probably be something that would, um, um, not be to the benefit of our taxpayers in terms of living in the city. And I know that that's a debate, debate for the fall rather than from now. Um, so the reason I'm, I'm, um, in favor of looking at, at zero, two, two and a half is I would like for council to be able to see during our debate in the fall, um, how serious, uh, uh, an impact there would be to the community if we had to go as far as, uh, as dropping it to zero. So, uh, thank you again, Council Palat. I will be in favor.
Okay, thanks, Council Blackburn. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. That motion carries unanimously. Um, and so I think Council Minhaas, we can come back to you for, uh, item eight point three point two.
Well, thank you, Mayor Given. Let's see, what is it? Yeah, that, um, loan by, by law amendment, C thirteen fifty eight and C thirteen ninety six. In the committee, that motion was moved to, I moved the motion to council for given the balance owing from the Army Navy and, uh, Air Force veterans loan, and that those funds are to be waived as grant of the organization, which is what's loaned, they would want to waive for one, one year, and then go for there and, uh, think it makes sense, because it was only ten thousand dollars to make this motion to waive that. It probably cost a little bit, uh, administration to do, rewrite the whole thing. It's easier to-
Council, Council Minhaas, I have to apologize. Um, I was alerted by Council Thieson. Thanks, Council Thieson. Um, in the, in the chat function here, I made a mistake in our last, um, vote in that, uh, we voted on Council Palat's amendment, but we did not vote on your original motion as amended. Um, my apologies, everybody. Um, so, Council Palat's motion to amend passed, uh, and then we had to go back to vote on Council Minhaas's motion as amended. Thanks very much, uh, Chris, Council Thieson, for that, that catch. Appreciate it. Um, so, uh, just have to stop you there, Council Minhaas. We'll come back. Um, and we'll just sort of retrace our steps a bit. Uh, Council Clayton?
Sorry, so then I'd like to, um, to rescind my last vote. I thought we were voting on the main motion and not the amendment. So can we, can we do a revoke on the amendment and then do the main motion? Thank you.
Yeah, abs- absolutely. That's totally fair. And, and again, my apologies, everybody. Um, so we will, we're back to Council Palat's amendment. Council Clayton has indicated that she may wish to vote differently, recognizing that, that she's voting on the amendment and not the main motion as amended. Um, so is there any other discussion or debate on Council Palat's amendment to Council Minhaas's motion? Council Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I won't be so more supporting this amendment. I think that administration has done a lot of work to be comfortable to be at a target, uh, of two percent. I absolutely support the range of zero to two percent, but to add an additional point five percent to that motion, um, in my opinion, isn't necessary. So I won't be supporting the amendment. Thank, thank you.
Okay, okay, thanks, Council Clayton. Um, on, on that point, you know, I'll just say that in the committee report, administration actually recommended a range that was, um, one, was actually slightly greater than one percent to two point five percent. And so, uh, Council Palat's motion actually takes the bottom end lower than administration's recommendation, and has the top end exactly where administration had to recommend their top end. Um, so I don't think this is outside of what administration was recommending, other than on the bottom end of Council Palat's, uh, addition. Um, and that even being the case, I'm happy to support Council Palat's amendment, um, because I think that range of possibility is what council wants to see, and then ultimately will make those choices. Um, any other discussion on Council Palat's amendment? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Thank you. And, uh, opposed. I see one opposed. Then we'll go back to Council Minhaas. This is a step that I missed before. We'll go back to Council Minhaas's, uh, original motion as amended. Uh, is there any discussion or debate on Council Minhaas's original motion as amended?
Could, uh, Mayor Given, can we just hear it one more time, please?
Sure. Uh, are we?
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the motion as amended is, uh, here we go. Council set a twenty twenty-one budget target of a range from zero percent to two point five percent as a property tax increase.
Okay, thanks very much. Um, there you go, Council Creason, without that clarification.
That's very good.
Is there any other discussion or debate? Uh, seeing, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of Council Minhaas's motion as amended. Thank you. And, uh, just want to make sure, can I, I would like to see everybody's hands at the same time. Some people start early, some people finish early. Okay, there we go. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Okay, now, Council Minhaas, we won't make you repeat the entire thing. We'll go back to where we were. We were on item eight point three point two, and you had just made the, uh, motion with respect to the forgiving the balance owing from the Army Navy, Air Force veterans loan, and that those funds be waived as a grant to the organization. Won't make you go through, uh, restating all that, uh, because of my error. Um, and we can open it up for discussion and debate on that part of the motion before we get into the second portion. Is there any discussion or debate on this part of the motion? Councilor Palat?
Thanks, Mayor Given. So if I'm understanding right, we're talking about the Army Navy going here? Um, so I, I wouldn't be able to support this, and, and reason being is we just talked about budget, we talked about those things, and I really am worried about, I, I know it's only ten thousand dollars. I just think that sets a really bad precedent for our community to start waiving loans. We've got another loan that, maybe they'll come back and say, hey, why don't you waive us? When the storm loan came out, I had a ton of calls from people saying, why can't we borrow less money? And I'm just really worried the impact this could have on our community. We've got a lot of not-for-profits hurting a grand jury, and just saying, hey, we can just forgive it ten thousand dollars, sets a bad precedent. And I think, you know, unfortunately for this group, I think it's a great group, but I just think they borrowed the money, they were asking for deferral, and we switched it into a forgiveness. And so I, I really hope we don't support this, and we honor the deferral that we were gonna originally do.
Yeah, thanks, Council Palat. I think it's our Council Thieson.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Um, I, I too am not going to support this motion. And, uh, I really want to, in a, in a sense, uh, thank, uh, committee for the sentiment. I didn't have a vote on there, but, uh, the reality of the situation is, is, uh, the, the Army, Navy, and Air Force veterans didn't even ask for us to give them a grant here. And as Council Palat says, it could set a pretty dangerous precedent. It is small, and you know what? If they were to come back and say, hey, uh, we can't actually pay this back, could you grant it to us? I might be able to get behind that, but simply giving it to them without requesting it when there's a very good chance that they may be good to their loan, uh, moving forward in the future. I don't know if I want to take that step without that consultation with them first. So, for those reasons, I'm not going to support this motion as well.
Okay, thanks very much, Council Thieson. Um, any other discussion or debate? Council Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Yeah, echoing Council Thieson's comments- Yeah, echoing Counselor Thiessen's comments, um, they didn't ask for this money to be forgiven. Um, they, and it simply sets a bad precedent. But the other piece being is that if ten thousand dollars in time we could give to another organization who actually comes to the table and asks for it. So I encourage uh council to not support this. Uh, it's really nice in its intent, and I'm sure the organization uh would appreciate it. I know they're more than worthy of it, however, it just doesn't seem uh like a great thing at this time in our um sort of fiscal situation, thank you.
Hmm, thanks, Counselor Clayton. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor O'Toole?
Mayor Given, I, I, I do feel that uh, I will support this. Uh, they have been not able to do any weddings, no fundraising at all in the last probably three months. And it looks like maybe even another month or so before that, or after that. So uh, they're gonna not be able to make the payment, and they haven't had any money in the bank because of operational costs. I agree with what you guys are saying, I truly think that uh they never asked, but I think we're just uh omitting one step. They're gonna come back one way or the other and ask for forgiveness. And I just would like to support these. These are people that have risked their lives for our country and our community uh and our province. You name it, they've done it. And uh, as a social benefit, this is a gathering place where they can uh socialize. And uh, like I said, they haven't been able to generate any funds because of this pandemic. So they don't have the amount of money that they would normally get through liquor sales, or rental facility, or weddings, or whatever you want to call it. Uh, and uh, I think that this is uh, I think this is a need for the community, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any other discussion or debate, I think it's like Counselor Freezen.
There we go, thank you, Mayor Given. Um, when we talked about this in committee, I wasn't entirely sure which way I would go, but I did support it coming forward to council for discussion. And having now had some time to think about it, sort of stepping back from that initial um excitement of being able to do something like uh forgiveness of a loan for such a worthy organization as, as this. Um, to, to step back from that has made me realize that I, I will not support this motion to forgive the loan. Um, and I, I would follow up with um a motion to defer for a year, which is what the original request was. To defer for a year, it effectively gives the same relief to them now. Um, a year from now, we don't know what things will look like. A year from now, they may well be able to get back into their revenue generating streams like um rental of the facility, like their liquor sales and so on. And uh, and, and what that looks like, we don't know. But for the time being, let's certainly give them this year of relief by deferral. And, you know, we, we can always forgive the loan next year should it come to that. But uh, as such, I won't support this motion today.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Freezen. Any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Okay, I see three, yeah. I have a feeling, Counselor Clayton, so I see three in favor. Okay, thank you, three in favor and opposed. Okay, thank you, I see the balance opposed, and the other six. Um, so that being the case, we will need a motion then to uh format it similarly. Um, and so maybe if one of those that were opposed could format a motion similar to the three readings that we would need to get to amend, uh, in this case, bylaw C thirteen fifty eight. Uh, Counselor Freezen, would you be prepared to do that? I think I saw your hand first.
Um, yes, I would, and I'm just going to um just bear with me, I'm gonna go back and see what the um.
I think, Counselor Freezen, I think you can actually amend the, you can, you can basically copy the motion that applies to the second bylaw, and just replace the bylaw number with thirteen fifty eight.
Sorry, if someone else is ready, go ahead. Completely lost my page.
Counselor Bress, sure, no, no worries, no worries, Counselor Bressi?
Great, um, I would move the council give first reading to bylaw C thirteen fifty A.
Thanks very much, Counselor Bressi. Um, any, this, well, sorry, no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Bressi.
Great, I'd move the council give second reading to bylaw C thirteen fifty A. And just speak to it, I don't have a lot to add except for I really think it's appropriate to defer this loan. And I think that one of the things that deferring it gives us the opportunity to do is consider forgiveness of this loan, if that is something we want to do, but it, with a more robust process considered alongside other community groups as well. So um, let's defer it now, give them temporary relief, and then also, that doesn't mean I'm not willing to talk about permanent relief in the future.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Um, any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody else, then I'll call for the vote on second reading, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, Counselor Bressi?
Great, I would move the council have third reading of bylaw C thirteen fifty A at this meeting.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. This is a motion to have third and final reading, any discussion or debate on the merits of taking that third and final reading this afternoon? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion passes unanimously as well, Counselor Bressi, go ahead.
Great, I would move the council give third readings by law C thirteen fifty A being a loan to the Army Navy and Air Force Veterans Units, number three eighty-nine.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi. Um, any discussion or debate on that third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, and that passes unanimously, thanks. Uh, thanks, council for that, and thanks, Counselor Bressi, for stepping in uh on that change. Counselor Minhaas, I think we're back to you then.
Thank you, Mayor Given, interesting. So I'll, I'll move that council give the first reading to bylaw, bylaw three, uh, sorry, first reading to, give first reading to bylaw C thirteen ninety-six A being amended to the Swan City Hockey Association Loan.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas, so a motion for first reading. Um, no need for discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, Counselor Minhaas?
Ask council to give sec- second reading to bylaw C thirteen ninety-six A.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas, open for discussion or debate on second reading of this uh bylaw amendment to uh provide that a similar loan deferrable to the Swan City Hockey Club. Any discussion or debate? Seeing nobody raising their hand, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, first and second reading, Counselor Minhaas?
Now, the third reading to bylaw C ten, sorry, thirteen ninety-six A, bylaw.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas, so that's a motion to have third and final reading. Um, any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading this afternoon? Counselor Bressi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given, I think that this is one that might be contentious with some in the community, so I wanted to speak to it a little bit, and just to, just to uh point out two things is, one, this is an interest-bearing loan where this is something that we're getting return on interest back at higher than our own rate of, rate of borrowing. And I don't know about the rest of council, but when I voted in support of extending this loan in the first place, it wasn't just for community benefit, it also was a business decision in terms of, I think that the storm's long-term viability is actually something that makes taxpayers money in the long term by generating rev, money for Revolution Place. So I'm glad to see that council supported this so far, and I hope we will continue to, not just because it's a worthy organization, but also because it's a good business decision to make sure that they remain viable.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Bressi, any other discussion or debate on second reading?
I'll have it, having.
Sorry, thank you on third, thanks, Counselor Minhaas, thank you. Um, and this is the motion to have third reading, I believe, yeah, thank you. Um, so seeing none, then I will call for the vote on having third and final reading, all in favor? Thank you, that motion does carry unanimously, Counselor Minhaas?
Uh, now, I ask council to give a third reading and final, C bylaw C thirteen ninety-six A being amended to the Swan City Hockey Association Loan by law.
Thanks, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that carries unanimously, um, and we can move on to our next one, Counselor Minhaas?
Moving to eight point three point three, bylaw C seventy-eight F amended to use land, public land by law election signs. And I give, ask the council to give the first reading to bylaw C ten seventy-eight F being amended to use public land.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Uh, no discussion or debate on first reading, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, Counselor Minhaas?
Give the second reading to bylaw C ten seventy-eight F.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas, a motion for second reading, open for discussion and debate? Seeing nobody ringing in, then I will call for the vote on second reading, all in favor? Thank you, uh, that motion carries unanimously, go ahead, Counselor Minhaas?
Ask council to have a third reading of bylaw C ten seventy-eight F at this meeting.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Minhaas. Uh, any discussion or debate on the merits of having third and final reading uh this evening? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion does carry unanimously, so we can have third reading, Counselor Minhaas?
So I move the council give the third reading to bylaw C ten seventy-eight F being amended to the use of public land by law.
Thanks, Counselor Minhaas. Uh, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? With note that if anybody's an aspiring municipal councillor uh or mayor in the city of Grand Prairie, this is good bylaw to pay attention to. This tells you where you can put your election signs. Um, there are some pretty extensive maps that actually uh demonstrate exactly where in the community you can place them. Um, and administration let us know at the committee meeting that they would be working uh in advance of the municipal election to create uh electronic version of that, that people would be able to search and identify um as they're getting ready for their campaigns. So I want to acknowledge the hard work of city administration in uh both the Clerks Department uh and the G I S Department in terms of mapping and making that sort of very visible and easy to see for, for us as elected officials and for anybody else who might wish to run for council. Um, I don't, I didn't see any other comments, uh, so I will call for the vote on third and final reading, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously as well. And uh, that'll take us to eight point three point four, Counselor Minhaas?
I move the council give the first reading to bylaw C thirteen forty-eight being recommended amendment by law.
Okay, thank you very much, the first reading of the records management bylaw. Any discussion or debate on, sorry, no discussion or debate on that first reading? I see that uh Counselor Thiessen uh has uh vacated the council chamber, as it were. So we won't be recording his vote if we can't see him give it on screen. Um, so I will uh call for the vote on first reading, all those in favor? Thank you, that passes unanimously among the council members present, Counselor Minhaas?
I'll give the second reading to bylaw C thirteen forty-eight being.
Okay, that motion for second reading on the records management bylaw, open for discussion and debate on second reading? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, uh, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously, Counselor Minhaas?
Can I have third reading of bylaw C thirteen forty-eight at this meeting?
Okay, so a motion to have third and final reading here uh this evening. Is there any discussion or debate of the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Hmm, again, that passes unanimously among the council members present, so we can have third and final reading, Counselor Minhaas?
Yeah, you give the third reading to bylaw C thirteen forty-eight being a record amendment by law.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Minhaas. Um, yeah, one final opportunity, any discussion or debate on third and final reading? Again, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. Um, and Counselor Minhaas, I think we're just about at the end for you, quite a minute, point three point five.
Yes, we're gonna go move on to the coun- council reveal all C one one four being with destruction or revision to the municipal records. So that, I don't know, we need to, do we know this one or this that or no?
No, absolutely, we need uh, not three readings, just a single motion will do to repeal that council policy. Is there any dis- um, discussion, I was gonna say any destruction? Any discussion or debate with respect to the destruction and preservation of municipal records policy? Seeing none, then I will call for the vote, uh, all those in favor? Thank you, and uh, Counselor Thiessen, certainly you can vote if you made it back in time for, for that thing. Thank you, thanks, Counselor Thiessen, that motion carries unanimously. Um, and we can move on to nine one one, call answer fees.
Yes, I move the council recommended to, and to add O P C to increase the emergency nine eleven levy payable to the const- uh cellular subscribes, subscribers by the something that, revelation to A E N A.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas. Um, any discussion or debate on this motion? Um, I believe the res- the um resolution for the fall A U M A convention is attached. Um, administration has been working with um similar nine one one providers across the province to have a discussion. We do already have a municipality that is going to second this resolution, which is a new part of the A U M A resolutions process. Um, and so if this was passed, this resolution would go to the A U M A Fall Convention. Um, is there any other discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing, seeing none, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Um, Counselor Minhaas, anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Uh, there was, but I think my computer just died. I'll, I'll leave it there, something else.
Okay, okay, fair enough, thanks very much, Counselor Minhaas, and uh, thanks for all those readings of all the bylaws. Um, we'll move on to eight point four, Counselor Plott?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given, I just think a motion to council adopt the minutes of the Protective and Social Services meeting called June nine last presented.
Thanks, Counselor Plott. Um, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes, anything we need to change or correct before we officially adopt them? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries unanimously. Um, Counselor Plott, anything you want to highlight in that set of minutes?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given, it was actually a really late agenda, we had a little bit of a verbal update from our director manual, but we did have a good internal portion, it was happy to see that we actually dealt with today. So it was nice, we, that was the bulk of our, our meeting, so it was nice that we got that dealt with today, but so that concludes my.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Plott. Um, then we're done with our committee business. I don't believe we have any items of correspondence this afternoon, um, nor delegation business, nor notice of motion. Um, and so I think that takes us right into our council member reports. Um, we had two, I think, Counselor O'Toole, you had Community Futures?
Yes, Mayor Given, thank you very much. Uh, can't really give you too much information today, but I will tell you that the Community Future staff continue to work virtually and plan to return to the office today. Uh, at which time they will create a schedule, so the entire staff isn't in the office at one time, they'll be coming in for a couple hours and then leaving, somebody else will come in. So just to cut down until they get uh things underway, get back into the field of the office, um, and uh so forth. Uh, also, that the uh networking and connections, the Community Futures managers throughout the province meet every Monday at two P M since March sixteen. And they just start uh talking about the different scenarios going on in their regions and uh lobby against, or lobby for uh more money to hand out at this. and, uh, lobby against, uh, lobby for, uh, more money to hand out at this particular time and, uh, loans. We also have some business development activities going on. Coaching and client one-on-one meetings continue to increase. Uh, they're regularly sending information regarding available supports and programs existing clients as it comes out and sharing on our social media platforms. Um, just a couple more I'd like to touch on. The, uh, they are supporting the, uh, Salvation Army, Grand Prairie Friendship Center, and the Food Security Group to prepare a community kitchen business plan that identifies current operations and operational aspirations, as well as a financial picture for growth and advancement of the partnership and in- infrastructure. Um, so there's, uh, plans moving forward. Uh, it's out of time and, uh, there's lots of stuff going on in the office. It's all virtual, so, uh, it's not as simple as someone coming in, sitting down at your door and, uh, going through your stuff. There's a lot of information passed through the computer, uh, time delays and all that kind of stuff. So it's about twice as long as it should take, uh, doing this thing, but, uh, it's getting done. And, uh, because of the, the slowdown, I guess you may call it, uh, we have staff that are completing, uh, their commercial ending training virtually, and so when I say it's slowed down in the office, they're just not going to the office. They are busy at home doing a lot of work. So probably, I'm not gonna say the hardest working group of people, but, uh, there's no downtime for them right now as they're trying to help other people get their businesses back on the ground and start new businesses up. So, thank you very much. That's my report.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Um, Counselor Freezen, I believe you had Grand Prairie library board?
Uh, you bet I did, thank you, Mayor Given. So, um, we met last week and really the big news is trying to get the library ready to reopen for patrons to come into the library. One of the biggest things that, uh, patrons have been missing, that we've been able to do curb side pickup for book borrowing and that sort of thing. But there are a lot of library patrons that come in to use the computers and that's really been missed. Um, because they've now been, you know, that, in many cases, that is the only computer and internet access that they have available to them. So imagine the impact on your life if you were all of a sudden not able to use any computer and have in- internet access at all. So, uh, so that's just one of the considerations is how do you now, uh, make your keyboard safe? Make the workspace safe for patrons to come back in. Um, not to mention, how do you organize flow through the library when there's all the, um, you know, the, the aisles of books? And, and it's a largely, um, it's a handling kind of a, um, service where you're handling books. You may be putting them back on the shelf or taking them home and bringing them back in. So all of that for our library staff is a great deal of, of, um, figuring out the logistics of how to allow patrons back in. So they're working very hard at that, and with phase two of reopening, um, there is, uh, we can expect that the library will welcome patrons again shortly. So we can look forward to that and, uh, thanks to library staff for working hard on it.
Thanks, Counselor Freezen. I think, Counselor Plot, you had, uh, Economic Development Advisory period.
Uh, yeah, thanks Mayor Given. Uh, we had met there on June eleventh. Uh, I want to throw thanks to Joe Johnson. We did a, a, another kind of show of what our huge I K S P can be for the groups. We had an understanding of, of the potential of that for our city. And then we had a really good, uh, governance chat about what a model could look like for a subcommittee, uh, for, for our group. That if we did have the recovery fund come, how that could be, uh, set up and administered. And so our group has approved, uh, the terms and references at, at this point and looking forward to having that come to council, hopefully for approval. But, uh, pretty good engre- engagement from the group. I've been really impressed. We have been with what's, what's been going on. There's been, you know, we've been meeting almost bi-weekly here the last little while. So I'm impressed with the community members that have been stepping up and really, uh, making sure there are at least, there's a handful of them. So I want to thank, uh, thank them for that as well.
Thanks very much, Counselor Plot. I, I think that was all of our updates from our external committees. Unless there was anything any other council members had that we didn't catch. And if that was the case, then we go to council member roundtable and we'll go to Counselor Thieson first.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Um, not much to report. Uh, I suppose none of us have a lot to report, uh, but some things. Uh, June eleventh, I just wanna put, tip my hat to our administration and as well as Alberta Health Services for the G-Prep, uh, info session that was presented to our regional partners, uh, within and around the region. Uh, so County, Saxsmith, Wembley, and all of our other municipal partners, as well as the public school trustees and administration were allowed in on that call to, uh, get, uh, some information right from the source of, about our health services and the impacts of what the coronavirus and COVID nineteen situation may present to our community moving forward in the future. It wasn't a rosy prognosis, uh, more of a long haul sort of thing, but there was, I was happy to, uh, be able to ask a question or two uh, expressly to Dr. Albert Aviliisa, who was, uh, very good at, uh, answering a lot of the questions and easing any concerns of the group that was there. Uh, finally, uh, you know, it was a weird, it was a weird Tuesday. Uh, I was driving around town, uh, with my son Jasper, and Jasper asked, uh, is the Palmero building the third tallest building in Grand Prairie? And I had to say probably the church was. I wasn't a hundred percent certain. But then we later went to, um, the Acropolis for dinner for our first family out, uh, in a restaurant, and that was really nice. And we talked about how, how Stellios, uh, had kept that place around for so long. Um, and then, uh, as we were leaving, we drove past the Legion only to be seeing the sign that, uh, our local legionnaire, Mo Morgan, had passed away, uh, in a rest in peace sign right on the Legion building. So I mentioned that because that all happened inside of about a two-hour time window and the next thing I know, all these people, all these great people in our community, uh, big people and legendary people in our community have been gone. For me personally, Mo Morgan, I was the closest to. Um, and, uh, I just wanna tip my hat to all the, the Legion members and Army, Navy, Air Force people who are mourning. Uh, I've known Mo since twenty-ten. Uh, where he was a regular at my restaurant when I was just a humble food server. Uh, he was always kind to me. He always gave some good sage advice whenever, whenever I asked for it, but mostly he was quiet. And, you know, the only time, a lot of times he would speak up to, I guess us leaders, is if we did something that didn't show the proper respect to the Legion, such as maybe wearing your hat inside the building or burying a flag. Um, so I wanna, I, I just wanna tip my hat to the life of Mo Morgan and to all the, the grapes that we lost this week in our community. And, uh, you know, hopefully they just, uh, planted the seed for a new round of legends to spring up in our community. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Thieson. Um, we'll go next to Counselor Blackburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, I, I don't have any, um, activities to report, but, uh, I would like to come to make some comments regarding, uh, stage two of the relaunch. We've been, uh, pretty lucky in Grand Prairie in terms of the number of cases, um, number of recoveries and so on here. And, uh, I'm, I'm really hoping to see that continue. Um, I have not been able to go out and see firsthand what, uh, behavior of the public has been. Um, but I'm told that there's, um, a number of places where, uh, social distancing or, uh, physical distancing, as I guess we prefer to call it, and the wearing of masks, uh, has been ignored in some places. And I just want to remind folks that it's the, it's the vulnerable people in our, um, uh, in our population that, um, will, uh, be at risk if people who might be able to fight off the virus or, or who may never get it, um, aren't following these, uh, these rules. And so I'm just encouraging, um, folks to, uh, follow the rules and the guidelines that have been set out by Alberta, uh, Health Services, uh, for the benefit of those of us who may be at higher risk. I'd also like to ask that, uh, people be kind to the, um, organizations that are open to the public, whether they be services or retail or restaurants or whomever, um, because they are doing their best, uh, in most cases to make sure that, um, um, physical distancing and the, uh, risks of infection are kept to a minimum. Um, sometimes, uh, it's an, creates an inconvenience for people who want to go out and take advantage of those, uh, services and so on. But, uh, in the long run, it's going to be, uh, very important. Uh, so I'm being a little self-serving in talking this way, but I do think that it's, uh, really important for not just me, but for folks in our, um, senior population, other folks who are, um, uh, uh, have, uh, a suppressed immune system, uh, and, and others who might have other diseases that make them, um, more susceptible to serious infection if they were to catch the COVID nineteen virus. So I'm, I'm asking folks to be, uh, very diligent, uh, for the benefit of us all. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Blackburn. We'll go to Counselor Freezen.
Thank you, um, thank you, Counselor Blackburn, for using your voice and your platform to speak for those who are vulnerable. I've been, um, increasingly diligent about wearing my mask in public, but, um, I know that many people are not. And, um, that is certainly concerns me as we start to see the number of people who are testing now asymptomatic and yet test positive. And, uh, that speaks wrong into me about the need for me to protect others, um, because I don't, I don't know. None of us know if we're asymptomatic, whether or not we actually, um, are carrying the virus. So, um, thank you for using your platform. I don't think there's any need to apologize for that at all. Um, I had a couple of, uh, cool events this week, and it's nice to get, uh, now that things are, uh, relaxing a little bit. We are getting a few invitations and there are some things that are happening. So I attended the flag raising for Philippine Independence Day on Friday, and it was such a delight to have a, a number of members of the Filipino community who attended that flag raising and, um, outside social distancing, of course. Um, but why, why it is so wonderful to me that we have, um, new Canadian communities who are in our midst and who are able to come to City Hall and say, look, if our Independence Day, can we put this, this flag up? It's so exciting that we, uh, city are able to do that for them. And it gives the opportunity for us to reflect a little bit as well on what these communities give back to the fabric of the city of Grand Prairie. And, you know, when I think about the, the social impacts and, um, uh, of the Filipino community as well as the, the, uh, the, the part that they play in the economic engine of our city. Uh, it was just a real delight to be there with that community and celebrating their Independence Day and raising their flags.
Thanks, Counselor Freezen. Uh, Counselor Clayton?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Um, a few events that Counselor Freezen mentioned are starting to pop in, into our calendar again, which is nice to see. I had the opportunity the week before last to, uh, in celebration of Seniors Week, to deliver some tea and flowers to, um, some local seniors. And it was a nice sort of way to get out and obviously through social distancing and through safety precautions. Um, but at least see some faces and, and some people, uh, whether it be at a, at a, you know, at a lodge or at a, at a individual's residence, it, residence, it was great to sort of be out and see people. Uh, and the seniors that I delivered to anyways were very appreciative, so that was sort of a nice feel-good piece last week. I also had, uh, an opportunity, um, through emails that we get, one that I get through sitting on the cab committee. Uh, I, uh, phoned in for a conference or a session called Transitional and Supportive Housing for Youth. It, um, was, uh, people across the country that were called into it. It was a very interesting sort of, um, you know, it was just over an hour that I was able to be there and, and there was great discussion about what youth housing looks like across the country. Um, as well, um, I've attended, uh, a couple of the regional summit entrepreneurship, uh, calls and, and good dialogue across the region in regards to what it looks like for us as the urban center to work with our rural partners and, you know, what we can do to sort of lend a hand as they look, uh, for, forward to opportunities of growth within their own economic development and, and, and sort of to figure out what our role is in that. So those, uh, phone calls I found quite interesting as well. Uh, and there was a couple other calls that I was part of. I was part of the G-Prep Information Session uh, that, uh, C A O Galanti, uh, referenced earlier in, in our meeting. Uh, as well as our I D P Steering Committee had a, a small, um, meeting as, uh, you know, as we continue to go down, um, that road. And other than that, um, I, this morning I sat, and I didn't mention this in committee roundtable because I don't have a lot to report, but I did sit in a, a meeting, um, with, uh, tourism operators across the region, uh, with my role on G- G P R T A, um, and what Northwest, uh, looks like as a destination for tourism. So, um, that was also a great, uh, conversation. And echoing some of the comments from, uh, Counselor Thieson earlier, our community lost, um, uh, four people come to mind of, you know, that each in their own way played a great role in our community, touching different sectors and, and, uh, so, uh, my sympathy goes out to their family and their friends, um, during these difficult times. So, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Clayton. Counselor Agresi?
Great, thank you, Mayor Given. I think the one that I'll highlight is I did take the opportunity to attend the Black Lives Matter protests here in Grand Prairie, and I'm hesitant to say which other councils were there, mostly because we were all wearing masks. And I know there were a lot of people in the community that I found out later were there and I didn't see there. So I'd hate to miss one of you, but my understanding is the majority of council was at that protest. And I'm thankful for the, the majority of my colleagues were there to hear concerns of our community and hear stories about what's happened in our community. And I know that those who weren't able to attend, it's because they had other obligations or other reasons for not being there. I know that everybody on this council really does care about having a fair and just, just community and is interested to hear the lived experiences of people in our community. So I was, I was grateful for that opportunity. I think that there's some conversations that we've always been having to some degree, but we probably do need to strengthen coming out of this, out of this movement. And so look forward to us talking about this more. Um, I'd also highlight to council that because I was at that protest, I did go get my asymptomatic COVID test. And it was really quick, really easy. I think the only painful part of it was having to listen to the robocall telling me I had negative results and getting that phone call about four times because I kept on hanging up on it. Um, but other than that, it's, I'd encourage the community to ta- take advantage of the opportunity to get a test done in less than ten minutes. You do have to book ahead to go do it, but it's well worth your time, especially if you're going to events or you're around other people.
Thanks, Counselor Agresi. Counselor Plot?
Uh, thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, well said, Counselor Agresi. I was also at that event way in the back with my nine-year-old daughter. And it was very fun, the conversations, uh, after that, and it was enlightening just to kind of get it from a nine-year-old's perspective as well. And, um, lots of conversations to come without, so it was good to see a good presence there as well. Um, the highlight I probably had was last Friday, as, as I, I think, back a little bit more normalcy with, with business community leaders with her coffees and breakfast and those kind of things. But last Friday, Rebecca Lee, Economic Development, myself, had a chance to meet with Barry Diedrich, who's at a meeting with Mark Fiskowski, and Gary Martin, the CEO and President of Candle West Foundation, as well as his, uh, Director of Investment and Trade, Cardo Duda. And, uh, it was great conversation. It's interesting hearing groups like this circling around Grand Prairie. Now, it makes me excited knowing, as painful as it is right now in our business community, there are groups looking at our area because it still is an economic common. There's a lot of great opportunities in this region. So as much as the next, from now and the next twelve months might be painful, I, I'm more and more optimistic that groups like this are coming here because we see big picture of Grand Prairie and that at some point we will see a good recovery. So it's just nice to have a conversation about recovery and big business and not, uh, some negativity for a while, I guess, to say a nice, pleasant change, but, uh, again, encouraging to hear groups are looking at G P and a big, big picture there.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Plot. Um, Counselor Minhut?
Thank you, Mayor Will Given. Yeah, I think a lot's been said and then because what I see there's, uh, moving the second term with a lot of people are happy right now to getting out and doing something outside work and talking to quite a few peoples. And the same thing like Yunus said, we went to the. thing like Unis said, we went to the Flag of Independence 122 year for the Filipino community. I ended up going to two different places, and with the mayor and the flag, and then another one was before that, eleven o'clock in the Miskupi Park, and they drove the truck around the city, ten, ten twelve. But the positive is, they kept the social distance, you know, followed the rules. And there was about, I don't know, fifty or sixty people there in the Miskupi Park, but they were staying away from each other and staying in the cars. That was a great thing. And then like condolence to everybody, as for you guys probably know, Mr. Bob Omrae has passed near Friday. And I had good discussions with their families last year. And he was one of my friends, and it was, I agree with him, always we get angry and thing there, but on the end, you know, we have a good relationship over the life. But he chose me to, because he probably told him to, I would be all very one of them. So I was, condolence to the family. And the one that Chris said, we lost a good people in our community. Time, you know, goes by, and time comes to make people who, my day. Thank you.
Thanks councillor Minhaus. Councillor O'Toole.
Hey, it's my turn. Thank you. I did attend the Filipino flag raising. My friend Neil, he's the president. He's been all over this province, just promoting the Filipino community. And he was quite pleased to see the crowds there this year. And looking forward to a larger celebration next year when things settle down. I also want to give you a little bit of heads up. There's going to be a press or media conference on the twenty-third of this month, and it'll be in regards to the Grand Prairie Buckwild PBR event being held in October. And there's some major news going to take place. It's going to be bigger and better than what they anticipated. The corporation that owns PBR is going to, well, you guys have to wait. You'll find out on the twenty-third. How's that sound? Now you're in suspense. With that, I do have a friend that passed away. He's a longtime educator at Saint Joseph's Church. He also taught at the College Law. His name was Pat McDonald. His wife was Jo McDonald, which was a councillor here a few years ago. And she passed away. And I just know that he made a big impression on me. He was a mentor. And occasionally, when we were in Edmonton, things worked out, I got to visit with him. He lost his life here just a few days ago. So anyhow, done for the night. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks councillor O'Toole. I'll just report on a few community events that I attended, and some AUMA committees that I participated in. I was also happy to do the Seniors Week key deliveries. I want to thank our Community Social Development Department. I know a number of other council members also did that. I want to thank our Community Social Development Department, and the SCSS departments across the region for facilitating that and organizing it for all of us. I also participated in the Power and Natural Gas Consumer Panel. We have a monthly check-in call. There are some interesting things happening in the world of electricity, that may end up being things that consumers across the province will see, and I will keep council updated as appropriate on that. I wanted to thank councillor Blackburn. You failed to mention the councillor Blackburn, but he did take on attending the Northern Elected Leaders Caucus Meeting. And councillor Blackburn is going to lead our efforts to stay informed about the Caribou issue, which he updated us on last council meeting. At that same time, I was in the Regional Economic Development Summit on Business Retention and Expansion. I also attended my first meeting of the interim Alberta Police Advisory Board Committee. This is the committee that the Solicitor General has struck to guide the development of the board that will serve to advise the province and the RCMP on how the new funds generated by the police funding framework, how they're spent. And so our job is not necessarily to make those decisions. Our job is to be there to set up the governance of this new board that is set to take on its role early in 2021. And so it really is sort of a governance activity that we're undertaking. I participated with a couple other members of council, councillor Minhaus, councillor Freezon, and councillor Clayton, I believe, on the IDP Steering Committee, a discussion about our IDP negotiations with County of Grand Prairie. And later that evening, I attended an AUMA and RMA Joint Operating Committee meeting. Thanks to council members for highlighting the raising of the Filipino flag and recognition of Philippine Independence Day at City Hall. It was a great honor to be able to do that for the first time ever in our community. And thanks to councillor Bressi for mentioning the Black Lives Matter protest and rally. It was great to see the community spirit that was there. I appreciated the graciousness of the organizers, recognizing the support they've received from our city staff. And I want to thank our city staff and members of the RCMP detachment for being so supportive of that initiative. And I appreciate the organizers' willingness to bring this vital conversation to our community as we discuss how we can eliminate systemic racism. This is something that is, is a part of every community, certainly across North America. Grand Prairie is not immune to that. And I think each and every one of us has a role to play in discussing how we can eliminate systemic racism. And I thank the organizers at that event for bringing that to the forefront here in our community, in our corner of Northwest Alberta. And I would just also like to add my condolence to the family and friends of the number of people in this last week that we've lost within our community, the Palmeroy family, Mr. Troutman, who is very involved in Grand Prairie Live Theater, Stelios from Acropolis, and Mo Morgan, who many of us know from the Legion. Active people in our community, and obviously councils, condolences go out to all the members of their families. But it's a reminder that we shall be seeking people who are willing to step up and get involved. We are losing people, and generations of people who have been very active and very involved. And it's up to new generations and new people to step up and pick up the mantle. And so I hope that as we sadly lose these people, that we will see people stepping up to become active members and our future pillars of the community. And I suppose that there's not a lot of sunny side when we lose so many important people. But if anything, this can reserve as a reminder that each and every one of us has a chance to shape our community in the same way that those four people that I mentioned shaped Grand Prairie over the years. And I think with that, I will end my remarks, and I think our council meeting is adjourned. Thanks very much, everybody.
Well said, Bill. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Bill.
Bye, everybody.